Um, first up today, Dave Rickman from the animal shelter. Dave, do you have anything today?
Yeah, we're trying to get the internet come down to our other building. I have, I give you one estimate, but I do have another quote for you guys. I forgot to turn it in with it.
It's the one from CEI that I told you about.
It is the higher one. Anyway, they've got, had CEI and HillFi both come out with a quote, putting a wireless bridge between the two buildings to connect the two buildings. They both have internet from one connection, so we have two internet bills. CEI came, or CEI had the higher quote and HillFi had the lower quote at forty-four hundred and forty dollars even. And that would give us two offices with internet, a vet, a larger vet with internet and then the center area with the internet. And then everything wired and installed. And then the equipment, everything connected to the other building. I guess it was a wireless bridge. We had, at one point, we had a wire connecting the two buildings and a dump truck or something caught it and yanked it down because of the length hanging down, so. The only other way to do it would be to trench it and then install a cable.
Yeah, you and I have talked about this a little last week. Having a buried cable would be more traditional for, I don't know. The stuff that you and I looked at, as far as the equipment though, there was really not much difference as far as.
No, this, this is what we're using in the park for the free wifi in the park. We're using this for the downtown wifi. We've got a similar link joining the city hall to a transmitter here on the building to supply the wifi across the parking lot for the free downtown wifi. So it works just fine. It's a, it's a proven technology, so I mean, it does work fine. It's just, I said, if you run on cable, you have that, that length. And then somebody drives over or something, or you have a gopher or squirrel nibble on it, it means you gotta find where the brake is, replace the brake, and you have other issues, so.
What do you think about that? He will need internet service in that new building for sure.
So this is probably part of the budget because it already has this, you do not.
No. Only, only money I have, I'll need to go back through there and see what I can do, you know, first and go from there. Only kind I have are donations, and that's about it there, you know.
And is this, does it put this qualified or something that could be used for donations?
Uh, we'll have to ask Jane about that. Okay, all right. Then we can do the donations, Jane? Okay, good, I'll get the papers.
So you think there's any difference between these two, Michael? As far as these, because they're real close to the same price?
They're real close to the same. It's pretty much the same, same thing. It's just local companies, they're both local companies, both good guys. It's just, it seems like Ron's a lot more busy outside of town, it seems like a lot of times. And I think, it just seems like Ben's a little easier to get a hold of sometimes. But both of them are about the same. Can't fault either one of them, in my opinion. At least not on these kind of things.
Ben Houston was a few dollars. Forty-four forty even.
Do you all have questions? Well, I'm a question, I have a pretty little request for this contract agreement with HillFi.
We have a motion by Tracy, second to Dale, to approve the quote from HillFi for the forty-four hundred and forty dollars to establish internet service in the new animal shelter building. Any further questions? All in favor signify the say aye. Three ayes, you agree? Takes care of that. How long are you thinking? Well, we really don't know what his schedule is like, so you.
Um, I was supposed to talk to him tomorrow, so I can ask him how fast we meet.
I gotta get to paperwork, go through the ten day thing and the county council for the, you know, the town now donations. So I gotta do that too. Get that turned in quick as possible and wait till next, first of next month, I get it taken care of. Sorry.
Well, you can see him tonight.
I can't.
The digital has to be advertised.
Yes. You know, the ten day thing there.
So, once Dave gives me the go ahead, I can go, I can let Ben know. It's just a matter of how fast the supply comes in.
Okay.
The new building, we got, we got the kittens all in there. We're using the cat area now a lot. And I noticed we hadn't have a, whenever they come in, they got bad eyes or something. We put them in a different location and it's helping us out. And we make sure they, whenever they first come in, but they get their stempers and the leukemia shot right off the bat. And they're staying healthy, healthier and all that. And then whenever I get a volunteer that will come up and take the one with the bad eyes and take them home, foster them until they get healthy, then we come back in. The training room has been getting used. The person, the trainer that's been using it, been donating the money to the shelter. So, you know, we're, we're getting, getting in there. And we are going to have a shock clinic coming up here shortly too, hopefully within, within a month. Getting Doc Redd, whenever he gets ready, so then we'll have a shock clinic come up, open for people up there. Doc, Dwayne Keefeavor would be doing that one. So whenever he gets ready, we'll have it set up and start using that bedroom for shock clinic. So we're trying to get all the building used and all that. And I do have a wash tub, I just gotta get it plumbed in, finished it up, plum, plum in. And I got another wash tub to go get, to get it plumbed in. So we're moving right along, just getting everything taken care of. But you, you know, like I said, you guys are still welcome to come up anytime, no problem. And I gotta, I get, I'm getting a sign made for the building that goes up above the doors. I'm waiting on their quotes to let me know how much it is and go from there. Thank you, guys. And everybody is bragging about the building and everything, so we really appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Dave. EMA Director Wade, do you have anything? Uh, Health Department, Matt Schur. Matt, you, you have a nursing fee scheduled to update.
Correct. The schedule only change is the line that says the fee for labs is set by LabCorp plus a lab draw fee of twenty dollars. So that's the only thing I did is change that. Since we're going to start offering the lab services Wednesday, I need to update our fee schedule so we can charge for it, so.
So you've got a different version of what you emailed?
No. Did I not?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're saying that's the only change you made from the prior one?
Yeah, just added the one line to it.
We, we did catch that this needs changed because of the date.
Okay, I mean, I can change that.
Yeah, that's the only thing that.
Okay, I didn't, I just catch that.
Yeah, they can sign later, it's one say previous, but I just want you to know, I'll change, yeah, I'll change that for you.
All right, so yeah, I didn't catch that on the, I just added that line. But we plan on offering the lab services. There'd be the first and third Wednesdays of every month from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. We have to, because of our pickup services with the lab and when we're coordinating with, I believe it's another county. So we're doing, every other week, we're doing Fayette County or the other county health department, so. So those will be starting soon.
You know what the lab fee is?
Yeah, I have a worksheet. I just grabbed these, or you guys can share. I just grabbed those, she just brought them up. They're basically thirty-five to seventy-five dollars, depending on what tests are, I believe, on the sheet, so.
So anybody can use this?
Yeah, we're, it's for the public. But yeah, any, any of your regular labs that, anybody that even has, just wants to come in and get their labs done just for their own curiosity. They don't need a, they don't, they don't need a doctor's referral or anything, they can just come in and get their labs.
Okay, so these, this lab work then will be available on demand?
Uh, Mondays, well, Mondays and Wednesdays because of the pickup service. So we, we're a partner with LabCorp who we, we will do the draws and send it to LabCorp. So we're, we're regulated by when they do the pickups to when we can do, offer the services.
Do you have a way, you guys are going to advertise it or?
Yeah, we're getting ready to do some direct mailings. Much like the one, the cards that you brought that Rush County did. We're actually going to use the commercial printing to print us up some cards and do direct mailings. Uh, once we get some printed out, then we're having available for handout as well, so.
Well, you have six, six types of lab things here. This is ranging from twelve dollars to seventy-five dollars. I would imagine that'd be a lot cheaper than the traditional doctor's office. I hope this is used.
Are people going to be able to make appointments to get that?
We put prefer appointments, walk-ins are available. Appointments would be preferred, so. We have, basically, we're, we're walk-in anytime for that, any services that we do. We try, we have a nurse available anytime we're open to be able to do any of the vaccines, any kind of lab services or all that stuff, so. So everything is walk-in, but some of the labs would be, an appointment would, would help with the wait. If there is a wait or anything like that, so.
And will this start being available?
This Wednesday.
Good question.
Twenty twenty-four oh eight.
Twenty twenty-four zero eight.
I'm going to approve twenty twenty-four zero oh eight.
Second thought.
Hey, we have a motion, Dale, second to Tracy, to approve ordinance number twenty twenty-four dash oh eight. An ordinance establishing fee schedules for the Health Department to include a new lab fee of twenty dollars. Any further questions? All in favor signify the say aye.
Is that exactly right? What are you, I'm sorry, I missed.
I mean, the lab fee's on top of the regular fees.
Okay, so that was what you needed to fix.
Yeah, and some of those fees, the twelve dollar ones and stuff like that is one that's in combination with other fees, so. So that's the way Missy said it was twenty dollars.
So that's the part you're gonna, you're gonna take?
So it'd be LabCorp plus twenty dollars.
Plus twenty, right, good, okay. I'll second that.
All right.
Thank you, did you first it?
We, we was having a vote here. Were you voting yes or no?
Yes, yes.
Okay, three ayes, Jane.
All right, sorry for the confusion.
Okay, anything else, Matt?
Nope, all is well, so.
What does the COVID levels look like around here right now, or do you know?
We haven't been getting any actual numbers like we used to when everything was real heavy. We have seen some positives. We've had a lot of people come in for take-home tests, so we do have take-home tests available. So you can, you can get the test or send somebody down to pick up the test to take home and test yourself. So we don't actually get the results, but we have seen some positives, so. There is, once again, COVID going around, so. Always recommend taking the same precautions, you know, washing your hands, staying home if you're sick.
Is it still five days? Is it still?
No, it changes depending on when your symptoms are, so. So when you're symptom-free, is what.
And seasonal flu vaccines will be available?
Uh, soon. I'll have to ask with Missy for sure. I know we're, we're going to, she's going to be doing the flu clinic coming up, so. So we're having a flu clinic at the park. And it's actually going to be in combination with the car show, the flu clinic and sock off and then all kinds of vendors up there as well with additional information that's free and sharing, so. So really looking forward to that event to kick off the flu season, this flu shot season, so.
Okay.
All right.
Good deal.
Thank you.
Highway Department, Jay Havlin, Jay, do you have anything? Dave?
Good afternoon. Uh, we faced the chip seal projects and most of it turned out real good. Some of the intersections just look bad because they spun around in them and kicked a lot of the gravel off. And once they get that stuff dry, there ain't nothing you can do for it. You gotta go out there and spray patch it with a spray patcher because they'll just tear that off too. But it's not picking up, so that's the main thing. But they're out there, we're trying to get our broom ready, go up and sweep it. We've been sweeping some while we can because our one cell phone broom broke down right before they all, we start chip sealing, which is about right, about normal for a project. But we're doing that, then we're going to go up and start paving up opposing, get that done, get them patches done. Get the brush cutters and everything back on there. The brush cutter broke down, a new one did, and they're going to replace the whole boom on it because we've been having so much trouble with it. So we're just waiting on them to tell us when they're going to bring it. Because they're going to put a heavier boom on it because of all the weight it carries, see if that'll cure the problem. It'll cost us, but we're going to come in and fix it.
Hope that does it.
Aside from that, we're been cleaning up trash on the road and stuff like that and cutting trees.
How many days did it take to do the chip seal?
We, I think we had three days tied up in it. We did Waterloo in one day, then we did all that over in around Harrisburg the next run. Then we went and done the one out there on three hundred south, we did that last. It took about three days to get, not, not three full days. When we done the, the mileys right there around Harrisburg, that was almost six, six, six miles or something. And that took, we were there the whole time. They had, they worked pretty steady and they're running daylights out of their trucks to get it, but they got it done.
How did that work out with having this guy come in with the?
It seemed to work out pretty good. He knew what he was talking about. He had, time we got out there to go start, he had all the intersections marked off and red lines showing where he was going to go. He got along good with the guys and explained everything he was going to do to Jerry. And Jerry followed him. They had a little trouble getting gravel on some of the spots, but that's just hard for the course of that if you try to do that, especially in closed areas like that. But they, most of the roads turned out real good.
Yeah, I haven't been on all of them yet, but they, I mean, it's been undisturbed.
Yeah, we got some intersections, we got to pick up some of the loose gravel on them. When they got it and they started showing through, they went back and put another layer on it and they almost got too much on it.
Yeah, I've seen a couple of those cars.
They've got the one down there on, we call Doctor's Hill and Sykes Road. They gotta go do edit, they gotta do one on, on one fifty by the substation, and we gotta do two hundred. And I'm not sure about the one, that one in Harrisburg is not as bad because they kicked most of the gravel off of it going around the corners and stuff down there, so. But it's still got some gravel on it.
Now, here you had some trouble with the, that of some of the signs, you had the.
He puts, he put loose gravel signs on all the roads we were doing. It didn't bother him over on Waterloo, but when we got to Harrisburg, they took all but one of his signs. I think he had six of them out and they, like, he lost five of them. They didn't take the holders, they just took the signs, which don't make a lot of sense. And that's all he had was six signs, so. He gotta get more signs made for anything like that to happen again.
Did you turn that into the sheriff, let him do an investigation on that?
I would be surprised, they just didn't throw them out in the fields out there and we just couldn't find them. Because everywhere he had a sign, it was by a cornfield. And you know, if you fling one of them signs flat, it's going to sail for a good ways.
If they run it through a corn head.
Don't know it.
Somebody will know it, yeah.
Yep.
We will.
Yeah.
And on the one out there on the three hundred and five fifty, he's got the signed order for that. He just hasn't come in yet, he's still waiting on it.
Thanks.
All right.
That's all I have.
Anybody got anything else for Jay? All right, thanks, Jay.
No problem.
I thought he might mention, if you were bringing, bringing up again. Okay. Michael King? You've got some laptop purchase needs?
For the prosecutor's office, they've been using these service laptops for a couple of years, actually for almost six years now. So they want to replace those with new ones. The print-off I gave you said the cheapest price were thirteen hundred and forty-two dollars from Amazon. I couldn't find any other supplier that had these available without getting the new ones that are not, don't have compatible software with what we need. But the price on Amazon as of this morning is eleven ninety-eight each. So they actually, the price actually went down on them as of from Friday when I printed off the sheet. So I'm going to get three of those for the prosecutor's office. They have some of the funds and I will be supplying the rest of the funds. So a total of thirty, thirty-five ninety-four seventy-two. Two of their current laptops were, are still usable after we wiped them down, they're just old and slow. They won't be frontline laptops, but they can be used as spares and travel or whatever, but.
Okay, so these, all three are for the prosecutor's office?
Yes, sir.
Have you looked into leasing them?
Yeah, leasing is kind of a mixed bag unless you're like a really big company where you can do like Gobsen got, you know, three or four hundred at a time. Plus the fact you don't own them, you know, you're constantly switching, you know. If, if we buy a computer or a laptop, we can make it last as long as we can. Instead of having it for three years and investing, say, five hundred dollars in it and then turning it back in. If we buy it for six or seven hundred dollars and we own it, we own it, we can make it last as long as we can. So your cost per year goes down as long as you can make it last. These, we got for, I want to say thirteen hundred dollars, seven, eight years ago. They're seven years old, buy that thirteen dollars by seven years, look how much it costs you per year. You're not paying any interest, you're not paying any rental fee, you know.
That would be the same with like our printers, copiers? Would that be the same scenario?
I looked at leasing, paying a lease payment for, like, the two copiers that we just got. If a five-year lease payment would have increased the cost by thirteen hundred dollars. So, you know, it's like leasing a car. You pay more per month if you lease a car, but you don't own it. You don't own the escrow, you don't own the, the actual product. In three years, you turn it back in, what do you have to show for your payments? At least if I make payments on my car after six years and I own the car. If it's my car, I can then sell it or whatever, but it's mine. But you don't own anything if you completely lease it. A lot, some of the computers we can still use for some things after four or five years if, you know, if we own it. We can change the hard drives out, still use it for, for non-primary purposes like like the computer in here, the back desk that's not often used. Not necessarily a frontline desk where somebody's always sitting, we're doing a lot of important projects. But there's not something you can do if you just lease it. But like I said, it's also a difference with a big company where you're doing five hundred computers, which, you know, a big corporation. They get a much bigger deal than we do where we're only going to be leasing, you know, switching out so many computers per year. So, but I have looked at it.
We could have used your budget hearings last week.
Oh, I heard. I, I heard one, one of his comments.
We've been kind of taking it on the chin about leasing versus buying, you know, and this is your wheelhouse, this is not mine. You know more about the computer business than I ever will.
Well, leasing is the same with a lot of products. Goes from the trucks for the highway or computers or anything. You make a monthly payment, includes an interest or a fee, and then those fees and interest payments add up. And it's just a matter of do you own it or are you turning it back in at the end of the lease? So sometimes it works out. If you're having to change to a newer product every three years, like a car lease, and you don't care if you don't own the product, no big deal. But with the computers, the other problem is we'd also have to move the data off of them every three years or four years and constantly migrating the data every three or four years and changing that, that product. Seems like an unnecessary thing if we don't need to.
So you've never been able to identify a real cost savings?
Not really. I mean, like I said, we don't get enough computers to justify. We'd have to get like a lot more computers, you know, a big corporation that were computers of all the same model. To really make it a pro instead of just a wishy-washy, maybe kind of, it might work out, it might not. You're kind of, eh, it might work better this way, but not this way. It makes it a lot harder to do this, but not that. You might save, save a buck here, but you're going to pay more here, so.
Okay. Well, what do you say about the three laptops for the prosecutor's office?
I would approve the thirty-five ninety-four seventy-two for three laptops.
Got a motion by Dale, second to Tracy, to approve the purchased three laptop computers for the prosecutor's office. Thirty-five hundred ninety-four seventy-two. the prosecutor's office, $3,594.72, stands. Any further questions? All in favor, signify with a say a aye. Three ayes, James.
But like the copiers that you guys got for the auditors' office and those before I started, I started in 2014, they were already here. I think they'd already been here for like a year or more. About those machines, they were on a service contract. The new machines are on a service contract as well where you're paying the cost per copy. They're taking care of the maintenance, they're taking care of the toners and all that. And then as the machines get older, your toner cost goes up. So, but after so many years, they just don't support it anymore, which is where we were with the ones for the auditors' office, those Rico's. That was 11 years. So you paid five grand, six grand for those copiers, expect to have them last six, seven years, and they lasted 11. So I think you have a pretty good bang for your buck there, so. Now, if you spend that expecting seven and then last three, then you got a problem. But they replace them if that happens, so. That's part of the service contract.
Okay.
So, anything else for me?
Anybody got anything else for Michael? No, thanks, Michael. Maintenance director Josh Jarboe. Josh, you've got a 144 request.
Yeah, I've got a request for an additional full-time employee, Travis Marshall. He is going to be primarily taking over where John was, really focusing on the outside and taking care of that. And he got a lot of painting and so forth that we're going to be doing. Travis has background in a lot of landscaping, Brick Lane and all that, so not to the extent that we'd like him to have as far as tuck pointing goes. That would be amazing, but he does, he knows enough to get himself in trouble probably when it comes around to that kind of stuff. He's good outside, so I'm going to use him primarily as, like I said, John, we can all be honest, it looked a lot better when John worked here outside and with us being understaffed. Our focus hasn't been out there, so we're going to get that taken care of again and then we're going to start hopefully painting inside the courthouse eventually too, so. All the walls and so forth, because they look okay when you look straight ahead at them. Just don't look down the side of them. You see a lot of fingerprints, but that's the plan with him. And I think the start date will probably be like two weeks from, so we can give him two weeks' notice, so like September the 16th, I think.
Okay, well, we, we had budgeted for this position, you just hadn't, hadn't filled it yet, so.
Yeah.
I know you guys have got plenty on your plate.
Yeah, it's been, you know, I was trying to push off filling it because training two people at once is hard. Keeping your eye on both of them at the same time is hard, you know. If I put him out there to do one thing and not really give him any guidance, then it's kind of pointless. And then having two guys standing over your shoulders inside the jail, trying to teach them, isn't going to work, so. Waited until I got Austin trained that he's going to be primarily inside the buildings, mainly the jail, taking care of that. And then, like I said, Travis will be dedicated to outside and doing all the other things, light fixtures and stuff like that, you know.
We have a question. We'll make a motion that we approved a 144 hire in the maintenance department for Travis Marshall, starting September 16th.
A motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the 144 request from the maintenance department for the hire of Travis Marshall. Any further questions? All in favor, signify with a say a aye. Three ayes, James. There you go, Josh.
All right. And then I met with a guy about the boilers on Friday. As far as our boilers go, it's a little too big of a project for him to take on, so we will not be getting a quote from him.
From more?
Yes. Yeah. He's out, he's on his way out, so the sun's taking over the business, so it's just those two, well, those two and then a new hire that they got. So the, our project is way too big for them because it's going to create, you know, a lot of technology that he tries to stay away from. He's more into like the boilers we have over at the probation building from 1940 that runs better than all the other ones.
Yeah.
But he recommended, just as most people do, Indianapolis, bigger companies coming in. I know we got the quote from North, so that one had some extra stuff on there. That wasn't primarily just the boiler replacement. There was a little bit of extra wish list type things that I put on there, so they will be coming out and redoing that quote. I also got a, I think it's QPH, I believe. They're going to come in, they're going to give us a quote. They're going to charge us to come in, so I'm going to have the guy that used to work for North, he now works for them. I'm going to come, have him come in, check out all our computer systems and all that. Usually happen to do that once a year anyways, since he's left North. He's just really good, good relationship with him, so I kind of followed him to have him take care of that. So his company also does boilers and all that, so he will quote that for us while he's here as well.
Well, thanks for letting us know on that. I'll share that with some council members this evening.
Other than that, I think we're, I mean, I got tons of quotes that I'm getting just on other things that we do need. But I think the key thing that we need to focus on is the boilers for the jail and the courthouse, because, I mean, I'm not so sure how much longer we can limp this one along. I mean, it's got all the parts that is good off of the one and all the parts that I got from Danville. It's working right now, but I'm having to reset it quite a bit, so.
Okay, anybody got anything else for Josh? Thanks for the report, Josh.
All right, thanks.
County recorder Lisa Witt. Lisa, you have some contract agreements, right?
Yeah. I didn't know if you wanted to do that under old business or not. I know I talked to Jane before. Okay, so the contract agreements that I've got are from CSI Computer Systems Incorporated. They are the land records management system that we use in our office that will, that is used to, by abstractors, to determine who owns what, what is deeded to who. It's also used for mortgages, it's used for DD 214s, affidavits, all sorts of stuff. If someone were to come, that's the system we're inputting stuff in. And then it kind of works with DocSpop, which is another company that would allow someone to be able to search, like if you wanted to search for your deed at home, you would be able to go to docspop.com and CSI gives that information to DocSpop so that you could print that information off at home if you chose to do so. A lot of out-of-town abstractors use it because our records aren't online. We're working on getting that done, that's another story. But it just allows us to broaden the accessibility to the public, to our records. And so we, we have a couple of contracts that we're using. One is redaction services because documents have to make sure that there's no social security number or anything like that available to the public. And whenever abstracting companies or attorney's offices repair that, they're stating that they don't have a social security number on there, but they still have to run through redaction because there are times when it gets overlooked. Or like if they attach a death certificate or something like that to it that would have that information, it has to be redacted. And then we have the microfilm services agreement and that's just stating that they're archiving what we're putting in there. And then we have the disaster recovery in the event that there would be a fire or something like that. Everything that we've got put in there, they're protecting it on their server as well. And so we sign these agreements with them annually and they just basically handle all of our stuff. CSI also works with something called ERM Connect, which also works with the assessor's office and the auditor's office that allows banks, instead of them having to walk their documents in or mail their documents in, they are able to send them through the e-record or the e-file, like it would be what the clerk would use. It allows them to run them through without having to actually physically walk them into us. And it allows them to, the turnaround is quicker for them, so they're not waiting on mail.
Okay, so you've got a total of three different agreements.
We have the redaction services, the microfilm services, and then the disaster recovery.
Yeah, I went through that stuff last night online, but I didn't, I didn't run a paper copy of it.
Okay, I've got paper copies here. Oh, and we have the maintenance agreement as well, because they're maintaining the system. And that, like the inventory that we've got, so.
Anybody got any questions for Lisa on this?
I don't think so.
The remote access, now that is, for anybody, like could I, could CSI give me information that I needed from home?
DocSpop. They give, DocSpop can give anybody, you have to create an account with them. They give you so many free, like free services, but you have to pay a dollar for the copy. And then you have to start paying for their, for their account.
Okay, so CSI feeds DocSpop and then DocSpop feeds me at home for information.
And we're getting, like if, like if you were to print off a copy of your deed, then it costs you a dollar for your copy, plus whatever their processing fee is, and then the dollar comes back to me. So like on Thursday, after, Thursday afternoon, I get something from DocSpop telling me X amount, like last week, I think it was like $141 in copies were made from DocSpop. But that's only for the records that we have online, because we're not, we don't have everything online yet.
And we've got very little online.
We have very little, we're working, but we have very, very little online, yes. That's what we're currently getting, but we're probably the most, the furthest behind in Indiana on having our stuff online.
So potentially this could be profitable for your office?
It'll, I mean, as far as getting stuff online, yeah, it's definitely profitable and for the county because they're not coming, they're not printing papers from our papers, they're printing it from home. Our ink is going to be less, our toner is going to be less.
Okay. I'll approve all three of your agreements.
Second half? Is it all three agreements plus the?
It'll, it'll be the disaster recovery services agreement, the microfilm services agreement, the redaction services support agreement, and then the maintenance agreement.
Okay. Well, a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the four, well, we'll call them service agreements.
I guess you could call them like the CSI contract agreements.
Okay, four contract agreements with CSI for the recorder's office. Any further questions? All those in favor, signify with a say a aye. Three ayes, James.
Then I'll give you a really quick update on what our preservationists are doing. We have Tess who is currently working on scanning the plaque cabinet. She has almost finished that. We've got around 450, 480 plaques. After she finishes scanning them, then we have to append them and attach them to CSI and then we'll start the indexing and validating portion of them. Cameron is working on indexing military DD 214s. I'm working on getting them scanned in. And that's a little more of a process because the DD 214s are photostatic copies, meaning that they are black with white writing. And so we're having to invert them so that we have a white sheet of paper with black writing today, today to make it more legible. So that's kind of what we're working on. And then I've had two companies come in to give us quotes on getting everything in the backroom digitized for records. We all know this is very important. Like I said earlier, we are probably the furthest behind in the state. One quote came in from Arca, that was $240,000 plus. And then the other one came in from US Imaging and he was working on that, but he told me he's thinking at least $250,000, is what he told me over the phone. He's working on his final quote. The nice thing with USImaging is they're going to have our project done within one year from the date, so if we were to sign with them tomorrow, as soon as they start it, he said it'll probably take them a couple of months to get started, but we can have all those records scanned in by the end of the year next year. They will be working here in the courthouse, so our records would never leave Fayette County and they would be satisfaction guaranteed. So if in 10 years we don't like the way something looks, they're going to fix it for us. They also, so we keep a copy on our server, CSI keeps a copy on their server, and then USImaging keeps a copy on their server, so we like have triple protection. Arca, they offered us some great services as well, but they were unable to meet the pay-for-print feature required by the state of Indiana at this time, and they do not work with our vendor. And he was hoping that they would be able to give us a timeframe on that, but he said there's nothing out there. The preservationist position and what I just talked to you about today is something that is coming out of Recorder's Perpetuation Fund that is set up specifically by statute to protect and to preserve records. So it's not like it's something that we're taking from anywhere else. And we basically are just preserving records and using that for technology upgrade in the recorder's office. So it kind of gives you an update on where we're, where we're going with that.
Good.
Okay.
I appreciate the update. And you say, now, now that you're almost done with all those plaques, that will eliminate the need to get those big pieces of paper out and unfold them.
Right.
That are burrowing out.
Right. And that's our only copy too.
Right.
So it'll, it'll really make it nice because those are, that is the only copy. I'm sure the county historian, she will appreciate all of that work, so. So, yeah, and we're having to be really careful with those because some of them have been opened and closed so many times and we're having to kind of doctor them and, I mean, they're really old documents.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Lisa? Well, thanks for the update on all that.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay. Sheriff Yelens, do you have anything today?
I've got nothing.
Surveyor Bill Mackey, Yelens, you?
Yes, I got the contract for you to sign for preliminary engineering on Bridge 533. Out on Bridge 12, so the state, they approved, they looked it over and approved it all and didn't find where you got the sign at. But, yeah, they checked it and double-checked it and everything's clear. It'll be a contract between us and Butler Fairman so they can design the bridge and the price is right here.
Is this the one you needed by?
Yeah, she gave, my pro, the program director gave me an extension to go ahead and just wait until the meeting today instead of having a special meeting.
Well, we was wondering about that.
Yeah, I got an extension, she gave me an extension that we'll have a special meeting on Tuesday, so.
Okay.
Design it and then this is between us and Butler and then the state will do one between us and them for the money part. And that'll come through that doc you signed.
Yeah, doc you signed.
That'll come to you through that later, when that will be between Fayette County and the, and the state. And that'll be for the money.
Okay, and this is bridge number?
Five thirty-three.
Five thirty-three. And the completion date was like 2030?
Yes, it was going to be built summer 2030.
Yeah, okay. You're going to be here for that, right?
Hopefully. I'll be at Old Man, but. The price is at the bottom for what they approved, right down here. Okay, that's what for the design and everything right away, that's the purchase right away, that's the whole utility, you know, the whole smacking for design and everything and project.
It is eighty-four.
Pardon me?
Eighty-two. It's eighty-twenty.
Yeah, eighty-twenty. Yeah, we'll, we'll only pay 20% of that amount. State will give us 80% back.
Okay, 20% of that?
Will cost the county.
Four hundred and sixty-four thousand of the amount.
Yeah, for about three or four years, period.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, that will be total county, that's, yeah. That's everything really, we need 20%.
We have to approve the contract with Butler Fairman on Bridge fifty, five thirty-three. We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the LPA consulting contract between Fayette County and Butler Fairman in Seaford for the eventual construction of bridge number five thirty-three.
Preliminary engineering is what this is for, which is?
Engineering, the engineering expenses for bridge five thirty-three expected to be built in 2030. Any further questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane. We can, now you need?
Yeah, all three of you sign it.
You need a copy?
I, I, I need, I'll, I'll send Jane a copy of that, and I'll, you can scan it and send her a full copy of the contract. I also got to send it to Endoc, too.
Okay. Which line is on this, do you want us to sign on this? Top line or the second line? I've got this.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of confusing.
Yeah, I maybe put it on, on the signature line. I don't think it's really one printed, it doesn't say anything about printing.
You've got the Butler Fairman rep with you today, who lets you leave with this, and if the auditor needs a, Jane, well, you need a copy of?
Oh, yeah, yeah, send me one.
Okay.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody have any mail? All right, we took care, under old business, we took care of the CSI contracts. Tom Fetterman is here today on behalf of Deberton Water Corporation. Tom, you want, you want to hear, you're here to talk about that grant matter?
Basically, I've just came back to see you tabled at the last meeting, and we hope that maybe you chose us over yourself.
Well, Dale, you wanted to take that off for a couple of weeks while you studied it.
I talked with Lisa, Joe Lisa, and I'm in favor of moving on with African, so I'll make a motion to approve African to move forward.
I'll second that.
Okay. We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to approve the grant application, the Deberton Water Grant Application to proceed in lieu of, I can't even remember now what the one was.
To rehab?
Residential rehab.
Residential rehab?
Residential.
Residential rehab, oh, yeah, okay. In lieu of residential rehab. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Right.
Three ayes, Tom. We know what we're doing, we just don't always sound like it. You know what I mean? I couldn't remember the name of that, that other grant right this minute. But I know you guys are kind of in a, you're kind of in a fix, and you really need to proceed quickly.
Yeah, sometimes you get stuck, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate you guys giving us this opportunity, so.
Well, we hope it all goes well for you.
We do, too. So, okay, but thank you.
All right, thanks, Tom. And our new business, we have Jay Gaddis here today, and he's going to, he's got some business to bring to us for Discover Connerville.
Hi, guys. I'm going to stick a script here so I don't forget anything. Discover Connersville plans to build a new permanent shelter in the Oasis Community Garden. The existing pergola at the Oasis had a cover that securely fit over its four supporting metal posts. However, we have had to replace this cover three times due to damage from winds and rain. Instead of investing in another temporary cover, we have decided to construct a permanent shelter with an actual roof to provide durable, reliable protection. This is a new 12 by 20-foot structure built on a concrete foundation to ensure longevity and stability, providing a solid level of service for various activities while protecting against ground moisture and insects. Funding for this slab is coming from a grant we applied for and have been awarded from the Fayette County, Fayette Community Foundation. This new shelter will provide much-needed shade and protection from the weather. We have been advised that a building permit will be necessary, and today we're here asking for the county if they will please waive the fee for that permit. For although we do have the money now for the concrete slab, we'll be launching an aggressive campaign to raise the additional funds needed for the shelter itself. Any money we can save by the county waiving this fee can then be used to put into that campaign.
No worries talking about, no, do you?
Well, it sounds good to me, and I know we talked about the great projects, so I'm with the motion that we would waive the fee for the Discover Connersville to put, get beginning of the, basically the foundation, a 10 by 20, or 12 by 20.
12 by 20 foot, yes.
Foundation.
Okay, we have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to waive the building permit fee for Discover Connersville on their project on Central Avenue. Any further question? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane. There you go, Jay.
Thank you, guys, so much.
Now, are we going to see you up there swinging a hammer and sweating and everything on this job?
It will save us some money and I need to, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Next up is county historian Donna Schroeder, and here to talk about the Liberty Tree and the 2026 200-year, or 250-year celebration.
Yeah, which has a big name and I can't remember it, so we're just calling it 250th I'm here on behalf of DAR today. One of the, I think I've, I've told you that in each county, the county historian was asked to oversee the celebration and plan some events. And DAR itself is offering funding for each county to have a liberty tree. And so essentially, what I'm asking is, can we plant a tree on the courthouse lawn and install some kind of commemorative plaque that says this was done, you know, for this purpose and in memory of our revolutionary war dead and, and just the country in general. And so that's what I want to know, will you let us plant a tree? I think a yellow poplar, tulip poplar, because that's a state tree. We could plant a mulberry, which then everybody's cars would be lovely.
I can't remember yet.
They would.
Given the choice between a mulberry and a poplar, of course, I would choose a poplar. But we do have a shortage of persimmons in this.
Yeah, that would be lovely, too.
Persimmons are a lot like life. Sometimes they're bitter, sometimes they're sweet.
Okay, if you want persimmon, we'll do persimmon.
Now, question is, do we have room for another tree out there?
Exactly, and that's what I want to know.
I believe we approve it as long as we got room.
Okay. How soon is all this going to, I mean, I agree with that.
We'll have to do it this fall. I think it's a stipulation with the funding that we have to be finished with the project by February.
Okay. All right, that's all. I'll second that. And it seems like we'll have to be, be pretty allowing for us to decide where that tree's going to go then?
Yes.
Okay, that's good. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy to allow for the planting of a liberty tree on courthouse lawn, place to, to be determined by commissioners. Any further question? All in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane.
Then I do have another DAR matter. I don't know if any of you have ever noticed, out on this corner of the courthouse lot across from the jail, there's a boulder. And it commemorates the location of John Connor's original trading post. I don't know how it got there. DAR paid for that plaque to be put on that rock. I don't remember where it was, but I think at Fifth and Eastern.
That is where it was.
And now, unbeknownst to anyone, it, it got put out there where nobody sees it and it's in an incorrect location. And I'm curious if we could do something about that.
Well, it belongs over on Eastern Avenue.
Yes.
That, that was the location of the trading post.
Yeah.
But when, as I recall, during the construction of Wendy's, and there was also some construction on that intersection by the state, the boulder was in the way and someone gave permission for it to be parked over here behind courthouse where it is. Now, you and I may be the only ones in town right now that's ever read what it says on that plaque, but it's not hurting anything where it's at.
No.
But we'd have to get permission from someone over there on Eastern Avenue to put the place back over there.
Well, I think Rick Lemon would allow on his lot. I don't know about Wendy's, because I haven't called Wendy herself to ask her about it. You know, it just seems odd and, and wrong for it to be back there where, number one, nobody ever sees it, number two, it's in the wrong location. So I just wondered if we could kind of think about that.
So it's the actual location then, on one side of the road or the other?
Fifth and Eastern, well, yeah, I think maybe Rip's is closer to.
Okay.
So I, I don't know, but just thought, I mean, I, it's wasted out there and it's, and it's incorrect out there.
Probably was forgotten about after, you know, getting it back to where it needed to be.
It has a nice little snicker around it, I mean, it's, you know. But anyway, I wanted to bring that up. And then also, if anybody from any of the not-for-profits are tuned into this, or any of the service organizations, I would like to extend an invitation to, to them to contact me. And you can call 8250946 and leave a message, or you could email tourism. But we really need to get started on projects. And I think if we could do a year starting in June of, of '25, and then do one celebration a month up until July of '26, I think that would be great, if we could bring some, tourism's going to dedicate some money to that. And so if you would get ahold of us, we need to, for one thing, I need to have the information ready as much as we can by the end of September to put in the festival guide, so that we can draw people into town, which is, is good for the economy. And I, I'd also like for the commissioners to consider maybe three or four times during that period, opening the canal house, or the, the courtroom, when we have the canal house open, maybe once a month or once every couple of months, so that we could show off the murals upstairs. Because that's, you know, that's really pretty special. And I, it's too bad that unless you have to go to court for something, you don't get to see the murals.
Well, we, we used to do that, there, have it for a while. During Winterfest?
During Winterfest, and I think we did it during Apple Dumpling Days, too.
Yeah.
We had a quilt show out here at that, during that. So, you know, I'd just like for you to think about maybe opening it up. And then as a side note, I know there was a discussion during the council meeting, and I've talked to Lisa about this, there are no pertinent records that are in the possession of Historic Connersville. That seemed to be an issue. And that just isn't true. There's a certain protocol that all records go through. And once the, what we have are clerks' records, they're not recorders' records. And the way that goes is, the office decides if they need those records anymore, if they're And at that point, state archives comes and looks, and if they don't want them, then Historic Connersville, as the oldest historical society in the county, is able to take them if we want them. And so that's how we got what we have, and they are clerks' records, there are no recorders' records, and they're mostly sale bills, anybody that wants to come up with that and are most definitely welcome to do so. So, so that's what I want you all to do.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Figure out where my trees need to go.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
I backed up this a little bit here for you to wrap this agenda up. Is there a council rep here that wants to say anything today?
Well, I've got news for you, Dale.
Okay.
I had my scan done today and I got a report back to breed, and you ain't going to believe this, it said I'm normal.
Well, that is hard to believe.
I thought you'd have a hard time believing that.
Well, I'm glad to hear that.
You think you're glad?
Yeah. Did you have any business on behalf of the council today, Bob, to bring here?
Well, no, you've given us our business tonight, I think.
Okay.
But, um, I'm just trying to see how much money we're gonna have to give away.
Well, I just didn't wanna skip over you.
Thank you, I appreciate that Dale.
Is there any patron concerns in the room today, anybody? Okay, that, uh, concludes our agenda except for claims and payroll.
I'll second that.
The motion by Dale second to Tracy to approve claims and payroll, all in favor of signify by saying aye. Three ayes, Jane. Now, I forget, I forgot to ask the county attorney if he had anything for us today.
Well, I do have one thing actually. And I, the sheriff's not here. Um, just as in defense practice, um, I think there's an issue with the amount of shackles that the county has. Um, and I'll be happy to talk in detail, they're a pretty inexpensive thing, I was hoping that we could maybe, um, do something with that. I'll talk to you guys, um, each of you off camera about it.
I hadn't heard any mention about it.
Not a very significant financial thing, but something that could, right now we're limited, well, sheriff's department's limited on how many they can walk over for, you know, initial hearings and things like that. And it just, I think it'll make the jailers' lives a lot easier.
Okay.
And then I have, I do have, just as a word, I have one more thing if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I would encourage you to look at your handbook. Um, there's a, there's a, there's a, not really a lot about comp hour payouts. Um, we have a couple people that are eligible for grants regarding, um, comp hours to be paid out by, by federal grants that don't cost us anything, federal or state grants. So I would encourage you to look at, entertain the idea of changing that language to say that comp hours could be paid out if you're able to pay for them one hundred percent by grants. If that makes sense.
Well, you say there's how many cases like that?
Well, I think two at least, um, Drug Court and Community Corrections. Um, and I'm assuming there are others, but if we could just do it toward that way, otherwise we're going to, we risk missing out on that money and not being able to use it. Or using it for a different purpose that we may not like so much. Just something to think about, I mean, I don't think it's, just, we could chat about it, might.
Okay, so you're recommending a language change in the employee handbook?
That's correct.
And this one only needs one?
Yes, just you on the front.
Maybe two? Both copies?
Yes. Yep.
Did you have anything else, Jeff?
I do not.
Okay. That concludes our agenda for a day. All that leaves is adjournment.
Second.
The motion by Dale second to Tracy to adjourn, are we forgetting anything? All in favor signify by saying aye. Three ayes, we're adjourned, thank you all very much.